Good evening and welcome to our meeting. Would you join us in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move to the report of our interim superintendent, Dr. Southwick.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. A lot of great news to share tonight. First of all, on your screen, you'll see a picture coming up here in just a second. Always technology for me. So you have a picture of Ben Bassel, a senior at Shawnee Mission Northwest, earned a perfect score on the ACT. We've talked about this several times, but only 1/10th of 1% of all the test takers achieve a perfect score. So we're very proud of Ben and our other students as well. Ben's very active in music and his school's first robotics team. He plans to major in mechanical engineering. Perfect ACT scores are rare, but we've celebrated several this year. I think it's a good time, and we've had this report, but to remind those of you in the audience and those that might be streaming and all of our staff that students in the Shawnee Mission School District continue to outperform not only the state but the nation in their ACT scores and have for many, many years. So we're very proud of our students, our families, and our staff. Several of our schools have participated in the National Walks to School Day this month. The students pictured there were from Brookridge Elementary. When they walked to school that morning, they were greeted by the Shawnee Mission South cheerleaders in their drum line just to celebrate their walking and being healthy. They join more than 5,000 schools across the country who took part in walks just like this. It's a celebration of healthy and environmental-friendly benefits of walking, and again, many of our elementary schools participated. Shawnee Mission Northwest students recently named the champions for breakout battle KC. They won an escape room challenge. They worked as a team, had 60 minutes to crack the code, solved the riddles, and escaped the room. They competed with the other student teams. The grand prize was $3,000 for their school. We actually went through an activity like that in one of our earlier orientations. It is not easy. And nobody wrote us a check for $3,000. And we're probably lucky we weren't competing against this group. October is Anti-Bullying Awareness Month. We know it's in the news every day. We deal with it. It's out there and it's ugly, but we've had students across the district that have focused this month of October. Many activities have gone on across the district. Well, Shawnee Mission North presented a play to multiple elementary schools showing that bullying is wrong and different ways and strategies to stop it. In the picture, in a big school effort from the students at Sunflower, they spell out the message on their playground, "Stop bullying." One of our schools recently celebrated a very worthy individual in a big way. Mill Creek's teacher of physical education, Jason Dolan, who's being deployed to Afghanistan, the school had an assembly in his honor to thank him for the service not only to the classroom but to our country. The school has arranged ways to take care of him and his family while they're away. An example of that, our watchdogs for that school have signed up to take care of his yard. And again, we want to thank Jason for his service not only to the Shawnee Mission School District but to our country, and it's another way that shows that it means a lot to our students in our community to step in when they're needed. As a part of the district's project-based learning, students at several of our schools recently presented their ideas for making their communities a better place to local officials. Students are asked to think of a problem they wanted to solve and then work to find a solution. Our Rose Hill students recently presented their ideas for improving the city of Lenexa to City Mayor's Michael Baim and other officials. Santa Fe Trail students presented their ideas to the city of Mission. It's pretty awesome to see the students interact with the city officials and for the city officials to take time to come into our schools. These are the students that will make up our communities. As a reminder, we have 14 in the Shawnee Mission School District. So it'll take a lot of leaders that we will put forth over the next several years that will be in their position. So we thank not only the staff for their work, the students, but also the community leaders as well. Kansas City Young Audiences and KC STEM Alliance announced that multiple Shawnee Mission classrooms will receive STEAM Residency Grant Awards. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts. We put the A in, and math. These grants allow teaching artists to be placed in selected elementary classrooms. The teaching artist will assist the classroom teacher to engage the students in science, technology, engineering, math by using art techniques, very creative. Example of this is that dance might be used to lead students through the coding process or coding lessons. Teachers will connect these lessons with Project Lead the Way Launch Curriculum. We appreciate the community partners who are supporting the new ways of engaging our students in STEM and arts learning, as we know the arts are important. Probably one of the best days that I've had for a long time was an opportunity to participate in the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation Fall Breakfast. It was a great event. For those of you that attended, we had over 1,000 people in the room. More important than that, we had student performances from all across the district. And if you could leave that day and not be proud of the Shawnee Mission School District and not be proud of our students, well, then you must have fallen asleep and not showed I'm not sure of the numbers, but at least the information I've got here is we've netted that day around $150,000, so we hope that number is close. It's my understanding that our students actually took the time, some of our elementary students, and wrote their name on an envelope that day. And we put a little challenge to the people in the audience to look and see if they could believe in those students. And I think our numbers were over $10,000 that morning at the breakfast that we collected as a result of that. So definitely want to thank Kim, who is here tonight, and all of the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation members for the support that they give to the Shawnee Mission School District to make a difference for our kids, our staff, and our community. They do provide a lot of support for us. Been a lot of tragic news around the weather across the country, whether it's Florida or Puerto Rico or Texas. We've got a lot of people hurting in our country. A bright spot for that is that many people in our district have reached out to help them make a difference. So we've had students and staff raise funds, collect items, help the hurricane victims. Neiman Elementary adopted a kindergarten classroom and collected school supplies so students in Houston could get back to learning. And students in social studies classes at Shawnee Mission North collected items to help those in need. And I know that's just a few that we mentioned, efforts that took across, all across the district. Important key to this is service to others. And, you know, we pass through our schools, we pass through our lives, and we focus on ourselves and our families, but we have to look around and really pitch in to provide those that are in need and provide that service, and it's a great lesson for our students to learn. Recently, we held a kickoff for one of our partners, our Caring for Kids, an organization we've partnered with for several years. That event was in this room. I had an opportunity to attend two sessions of that particular event. As we work across our community, our schools were here, their administrators were here, with local churches, with local service organizations, trying to develop plans in our schools of where do we have needs and what can we do to work to fulfill those. Through this partnership, 24 schools have connected with 96 partnering organizations, and these community members have a lot to give our students. But each of those people would tell you that the students give a lot to them as well. So it's a great partnership that we have. We can't do it all by ourselves, and as we forge these partnerships, once again, it's service to others, it's taking care of our students and our families. Shawnee Mission School District was awarded Healthy KC Goal for 2017. I want to mention that last year we were silver. This year we are gold, and next year we plan to be platinum. We were among 233 area businesses awarded workplace wellness certifications. These awards recognize wellness efforts including nutrition, physical activity, tobacco cessation, and others. Wellness for our students and our staff is a top priority. We're glad to see these efforts be recognized, but more important, we're glad to see our people participate, take care of themselves, and take care of their families. And we say all the time, if they do that, they will be good for the organization. Another fun event last week was the grand opening celebration of the Center for Academic Achievement. I had an opportunity to stand on the first kind of raised area of the nest as the students tied the five ribbons. Each one of those ribbons represent a color of our high school, and each one of those students came from one of the five high schools. Ribbon tying helps signify that, in many ways, this building brings people together. As you know, we house our administrative offices here. We run a school currently, about 150 students in the morning and about 150 in the afternoon. We have great capacity to grow. And we also operate this building as a community building and offer that space up. So we had about 200 guests that night. It was a fun event, and it gave people an opportunity to tour the building and really get a sense of what we do here. We had an opportunity, I want to mention, Commissioner Watson was here in the building last week with some politicians and some state board members. We toured them through the signature programs, and they had an opportunity to look at the classrooms and visit with a few of our students. Happened to be on a late start day, but we have students that come in on late start days to work early with our staff. So they had a chance to visit and talk about what it's like to be in this building with the instructors they have pursuing the courses of their passion. And as we got ready to leave this building to go to North High School, Commissioner Watson leaned into some of the politicians and said that the Kansas Can and the Innovative Schools projects that we have going across the state, they categorize these as the first seven or the Mercury Seven, and there's another group of about 21 they're calling the Gemini. But he made a statement that made me feel really good, and I hope that our district feels positive about it, because he said, "Seven years from now, schools across the state of Kansas will look just like they do here in the Center for Academic Achievement." So we're doing a lot of great things. Our staff are doing a lot of great things, and I thank the board and the community for giving our students that opportunity. Later this week, we're going to celebrate the groundbreaking for the new aquatic center out in Lenexa. Our board saw a presentation about the aquatic center at our last meeting. This is a collaborative effort between the school district, the city of Lenexa, Johnson County Parks and Rec, our architects ACI Bowlin, and of course, our contractors J.E. Dunn. Ceremony is planned for 10:00 a.m., October 26th, this Thursday, at the site. It's at 87th between Elm Ridge and Winchester. We would invite anybody that'd like to come to attend. And we think it's an 18- to 24-month project, and it'll be another great building that will deliver for our communities and for our school district. And now we come to a really, really cool part of our program. This is, for me, is beginning to be the highlight, and I know for a lot of the board, and it's our All-Means-All-Star Award, and we have two presentations tonight, and I'd like to introduce Matt Engler to come up, who will present our first award.
Thank you, Dr. Southwick and the Board of Education, for allowing me to introduce to you one of Hocker Grove's excellent teachers and building leaders. When we were tasked with trying to come up with what makes Molly Long an All-Means-All-Star, it was very easy for many reasons. It's easy to think about her many building leadership roles, some of which consist of leading our PBIS team, organizing school-wide celebrations, volunteering to help for buses every afternoon, running our SOAR store, developing our Eagle Excellence Program, and many more. She's also a mentor to our new teachers in the building. It's also easy to think about what Molly does within the classroom. She always goes above and beyond for all of our students. She stays late and meets early with students as needed. She communicates with parents often, even on Saturdays when needed to call home, to try to be proactive. Every decision she makes within the classroom and within the school is putting the students' interests in mind first, even if it creates more work for herself. It's also easy to think about just the characteristics that Molly has. Her positive characteristics help transform the school culture within Hocker Grove. She maintains a positive attitude, strong work ethic, and she works very well with her staff and her colleagues. All of these roles and characteristics are really great, but in my opinion, what makes Molly a true All-Means-All-Star is that Molly is dedicated to our Shawnee Mission North community as a whole. She is committed to developing community service programs, whether it be working with Sharon Lane and other community partners and brings those within our building. She is committed to working with all of our students, whether it be our at-risk community or our high-achieving students and everybody in between. She is committed to supporting our staff and students as we try to live out our mission and serve our community. For that reason, I'm proud to introduce Molly Long to you. She is an All-Means-All-Star and a true champion of the Shawnee Mission North Committee. It's my understanding we have a video for Molly.
I love algebra. It's one of my favorite classes because I know when I show up, Miss Long is going to do something new, and it's going to be something memorable that I hope I don't miss school because it's more fun to be there and actually see it for yourself.
Funny.
Yes, I love her class. It's my favorite one. She's just an amazing teacher.
I often think, like, how would Molly approach this? Because, yeah, they're middle schoolers.
Perfect. So he says, "If you picture it on a graph, it's..."
How would I put the student person in this situation and help them?
She's here early, she stays late, she works with kids before and after school every single day. She makes contacts with community members. She does whatever she needs to make sure every student is taken care of.
I love Miss Long. She's very funny, and she uses humor in her math lessons. It makes math interesting and fun.
But like, building relationships, that's, you know, number one for her, both inside and outside the classroom.
Talk to students there at the high school, and they always remember Miss Long, and they remember all the things she went over and above for them to make them successful.
So Molly, if you would come on up.
Congratulations. This is your opportunity to be embarrassed in front of everyone.
Thank you.
I would like you to say something, please.
Oh, what? I want to thank my administrators for nominating me for this award, and thank you to the people that, I guess, chose me from the nominees. Again, I think that I'm one cog in this entire machine, and I think that there are lots of people that do these things on a daily basis. And so I'm honored to be, or honored to be, what's the word? I don't even know. I'm honored to be recognized for this, but, you know, there are lots of people at my building and across the district that do the same thing. So, thanks.
Now I'd like to introduce Nancy Coconare, who will present our next award.
Good evening. I would like to introduce Rita Tolliver to everyone, and many of you already know Rita. She joined food service in Shawnee Mission in 2004, and she currently is the manager at Shawnee Mission West Cafeteria, and that's no small task. Besides feeding the students at Shawnee Mission West, she and her staff prepare the meals for the Early Childhood Center here for CAA and for many, many catered events across the district. Rita exemplifies the All-Mean-All-Star Award for her caring and her compassion. She always has a smile on her face, a kind word, and a willingness to help. She has built confidence in her employees to do their very best and to grow professionally. I know of five people that she has trained and have gone on to be excellent managers that are current managers within our district. She interacts with students in the classroom and with them during breakfast and lunch, always making them a part of her extended family. So now let's watch a little bit about Rita.
All right, we're going with the chicken fingers today?
She's just an amazing person, not only with her staff and running one of the busiest cafeterias in the district, but she's just great with her kids. As we all know, lunch is very important for students, and she makes them feel welcome and invited as if they already have a parent looking after their kids during lunch.
Well, Miss Rita, she's really nice. Like, every day she asks me, "How's my day going?" and stuff like that. She can always find a way to put a smile on everyone's face. She makes sure that everyone has, like, plenty enough to eat, and like, if you're left out, then she'll try to help you as much as she can.
Let's load up on these fruits and vegetables.
You know, she does a great job. She hires some great workers in there, and she runs a real good shift, and the kids really, really appreciate her. They really do.
All right, all right. Hello.
How are you doing today?
I'm doing good. How are you doing?
I'm doing great.
She's an absolutely amazing asset to this school district. Five years ago, I would have never thought about being a manager of a kitchen, and she encouraged me and taught me so much that I felt confident when I took this job, and she was just absolutely amazing.
It's externally important to have someone like Rita take pride in what she does, so that way the kids get healthy nutritious meals on a daily basis.
Rita is the most caring, the most outgoing, down-to-earth person. She started as a floater with us, has worked her way up, and is now one of our most outstanding people in our department. We're very proud to say she's a food service employee.
I gotta tell you, there is never a day when I don't see a smile on this lady's face. I have never seen her ever without one. Congratulations.
Dr. Southwick and distinguished school board members, I would like to thank you for such a great honor. I don't stand here alone. I stand with Ms. Nancy Coconare and my supervisors and everyone at Shawnee Mission West Kitchen. I appreciate this honor so much, and I will continue to do everything I can to represent the Shawnee Mission School District. I'm always telling everybody about this district. And so, thank you once again, and I thank my family for being here and supporting me on tonight. Thank you.
And we'll be back next month, but congratulations to our recipients for what they do every day in the Shawnee Mission School District.
So are we on to special presentations?
We are. We have three presentations tonight. Our first is regarding a district partnership that we have with K-State, and I think Dr. Ziegler and has some of her partners, or at least one of her partners from K-State that's here tonight, so we'll give you the floor.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about the work that we are now completing our second report on, and that started several years back with a great partnership opportunity between the Shawnee Mission School District and Kansas State University. So with us tonight is Dean Debbie Mercer of the College of Education, and you have also available to you, I think with Dr. Southwick sharing that information, the second report out of the work that we have had underway in partnership between our two organizations. So please help me welcome Dean Mercer.
Well, thank you. It's an honor to be here this evening. I define a successful partnership as beneficial to everyone that's involved, and I think that that's what we have forged between Kansas State University's College of Education and your school district. So it's a pleasure to be here tonight and highlight just some of our work that we've accomplished and a few things that we're thinking about for the future. So we started the LEED 512 Master's Academy, and that leads to a master's degree and licensure for building principals, and it's our hope that you are growing some of your own from among your fabulous teaching base. So that partnership is collaboratively taught, so some classes are online, other classes were right here in your facilities, and it's a Kansas State University faculty member, right alongside one of your current administrators. So the courses are very much tailored to your needs. So if we're talking about school finance, we're talking about state-level finance issues, of course, but we're also talking about the Shawnee Mission School District finance needs and challenges as well. So that cohort is making phenomenal progress. We also have a cohort of very dedicated individuals that, while they're working full-time for you, are also engaged in a doctoral cohort, working on their terminal degree. And so we're excited about the progress that they're making, working through the program as a cohort, again, co-taught many of the courses with Kansas State faculty members and your own faculty members. So I want to thank Dr. Shoemaker and Dr. Ziegler for their support and their involvement in that program, and we're looking forward to the very impactful research that comes from this group that I think will continue to help propel the district forward. We also have our IPDS. That stands for Innovative Professional Development School Partnership. K-State almost 30 years ago started to build their program on the foundation that teachers are not prepared within the walls of Bluemont Hall on Manhattan's campus, but it's best done in collaboration with P-12 partners. And so the innovative part of our professional development school heavily involves Apache IS and involves technology to aid in distant supervision, and it involves your instructional coaches and the very best of your teachers supporting and nurturing our student teachers as they finish out their coursework. So last fall, we had 18 student teachers in your district, and I believe you hired 12 of them at semester. So again, a pipeline that not only brands them with Kansas State University but also brands them with the Shawnee Mission School District way. And so Britt Pumphrey is here tonight, Pam Lewis, they've both been phenomenal supporters of their teachers and our students that are also your teachers. So we're excited about the work that is taking place there, very student-centered and very innovative and creative teachers we're producing together. And then finally, I'll touch on our work related to your English language learners. That's a growing demographic for you. Last year, we had faculty in 10 buildings. They modeled, they observed, they provided feedback, powerful conversations surrounding how do we best support your English language learner population. So our preliminary data has shown significant student learning gains because of that partnership and that involvement. So we look forward, as we continue that work, really focused on biographically-driven instruction, getting to know those children and what their individual needs are to help make sure that they continue to progress and make good progress. So we're excited about continuing that work this year. There are also other opportunities that we take advantage of as they... There are also other opportunities that we take advantage of as they bubble up. That might be writing a grant together to solicit extra funding for a particular initiative, or sharing the really good work that happens here in the school district more broadly through publications and presentations. So we're excited about additional activities and initiatives that arise. And I want to take a last moment to thank the liaisons from both of our schools. We both represent very large organizations, and the communication is critical to a good partnership. So Dr. Toni Martinez at Kansas State University and Dr. Kristi Ziegler right here are in constant communication, and if something comes up, Toni will say, "I'll just text Kristi," and you know, it won't be long, and we'll hear right back from her, and allows our work to continue to move forward. So again, I think partnerships are based on mutually beneficial initiatives, and I feel like we're producing stronger teachers for you because of our partnership, and I feel like you have value-added of extra hands-in rooms and high-quality pipeline teachers, so we appreciate it.
We're happy to answer any questions if you have them. I do appreciate the dean coming tonight from Manhattan to be here to share lots of great work, lots of great energy that's coming from the partnership, infusing that across our teachers, and continuing to build, again, strength as we are bringing on additional staff members to our team.
Very good.
Thank you.
Second presentation tonight, just to ask Chief Douglas to come forward a little bit, talk just a little bit about Blue Eagle, and not just what's happening in the classroom with our students, because that's extremely important, but the community outrage that we're beginning to see and the support from surrounding communities. So Chief, thanks for being here.
Mr. President, members of the board, it's my pleasure to report back a little bit on the status of Blue Eagle, but it'll be just a pie slice. There's so much of it, we couldn't talk about it this evening and not disrupt your agenda. But I would say this: We are three semesters into a program that has grown from 600 in the first year to 2,000 in the second year. We have gone through Phase Two, which has included the addition of all the other classes. Law classes are in there, forensics classes are in there, the law enforcement and fire courses at the CAPS level are all in there, rising from two courses. But as much as it's going on there, I really want to talk a little bit about equipment, because that's where our collaborative efforts really shine and come through, and we have had tremendous support from the cities and the agencies who have recognized what we're trying to do and are working with us in so many ways. Let me start off by telling you something you already know: We purchased a fire truck. We got it from a widow, the fire chief out in California, in San Jose. What you may or may not know is our own foundation paid for over half of that fire truck, and those funds were put into it. What you may also not know is, once the widow who owned the fire truck found out that it was for a training institution or a high schools, a high school setting, she donated $13,000 of equipment which was on it. So essentially, we bought the truck for $13,000, half of it was paid for the foundation, and the widow gave us the other $13,000 in equipment. The San Jose Fire Department found out what we were doing and donated 100-foot of brand-new hose, which is no small matter either. The Kansas Wildlife and Forestry folks, who were kind of a clearinghouse for used firefighter equipment throughout the state, primarily in wildland firefighting, gave us about 20 sets of bunker gear. That's the canvas heavy-duty stuff that the firefighters were into the fires. Some boots, and certainly some training materials. We received 100 sets of bunker gear from the Overland Park Fire Department. Now, you can only use them for a certain time, and they're no longer certified to go into an active fire, but that doesn't mean their life is gone. It just means that you can't put them in an active structure fire. Our kids don't go into active structure fires, at least not yet. And so consequently, each one of those sets of bunker gear, we received 125 to this point, is worth about $900 to $1,000. From the Lenexa Fire Department and the city, we've received a bunch of stuff. We started off with 70 sets of SCBA equipment. Now, an SCBA is a self-contained breathing apparatus. That's the tank and the respirator and the mask and all of that. We received 70-plus sets of all of those things, including all the air bottles that go with it. And our kids are already training on it, learning how to breathe from it, learning how to use it, learning how to go through confined spaces. We also purchased early or late last year an ambulance for $7,000 from Sedan, Kansas, but we wanted it to be up to the state standard for a Type 1 ambulance, so our kids could train in the most realistic possible way. And I also tell you that next year, we will be opening up the third phase, which is the EMT component to all of this. On the ambulance, Lenexa gave us a plethora of equipment. We have backboards, we have gurneys, we have all kinds of things from their fire service which changed over to MEDAC, and we were the recipients of tons of that stuff. We even got suction devices, and that's the bottle with the hose and all the apparatus that they use on severely injured patients. How it works, I have no idea, but I can tell you it was expensive. I can also tell you that they gave us portable infrared searching equipment to allow us to see through the smoke and fire into the area that was there. That's first generation, but it also is very expensive. They gave us tons of other miscellaneous equipment, and you saw how proud those kids were wearing those blue uniforms. They gave us 300 of the shirts. We've ordered pants to go with that, and they'll look really sharp. The other day, I testified before the Tongonoxie City Council. They received a grant of $58,000 for all-new fire hose, nozzles, and other appliances. What that means, I don't know, but appliances. And the equivalent that they were retiring was given to us for our program. So we've obtained that. In addition to that, we have $15,000 of committed scholarship funds. When I went out and asked some of the major cities to donate $3,000, Leewood and Overland Park and Prairie Village all gave us $3,000, and Lenexa gave us $6,000, and we have another $3,000 we think will be coming shortly. So when we finish with our articulated credit agreements, if a child cannot afford to pay that amount, we have a fund that we can go into that will allow them to get credit. We just found out today that we are the recipients of a new special compressor, well, it's a used special compressor, for filling the air tanks that we have from Lenexa. We've been looking at purchasing one for about $5,000, but it was given to us today. Lenexa wants to give us a retired police vehicle, and I'm certainly not going to say no. We can use that in the police side. And finally, we are working on through Tongonoxie donations of additional helmets and boots, and I'm almost afraid to jinx it, and I can't tell you any details, but we are working on a small radio system that would give us a base station, two mobiles or three, and all the walkie-talkies we would need to be able to carry out our operations in all of these signature programs. Now, why is this so important that we have buy-in from our neighbors? Two reasons. Number one, and probably the most important, is we are now full-fledged partners with our community in producing jobs that these kids will be eligible for as they leave. And we are, this year, this year, we will produce kids who can take the test and certify at the basic level for firefighting. After next year, we will be able to produce children, become men and women, who will be able to take the national test. And the thing that's so important about that is having real equipment to work on and practice with and go forward. And those of you who have been patient enough to listen to me, you know what my other plans are for a facility, not a new facility, but taking over some of the area that we have to convert it into working for this program. So we've made real strides, and I can't tell you how proud I am of them. I'll answer any questions you have.
Questions?
I think you've been talking with other school districts as well. We have 2,000 students here in Shawnee Mission. Are there any conversations with other school districts?
Well, my understanding, you'd have to ask that of Dr. Ziegler, but I'm understanding that Blue Valley has approached us over the possibility of taking some of their students. And one of the things that I'm also looking at, if it's at all possible, is using distance learning and being able to use our classroom experience for other locations across the state in cooperation with their police and especially their fire department, who would offer the hands-on, where we could be a force multiplier in the number of kids who take our classes and provide something tangible for a lot of small communities who could never do this kind of program.
Thank you.
Could you give us a quick update and reminder of the source of staffing? Meaning, are the instructors those that we already have on staff and we're tooling and retooling them for the special area, or are also bringing in others to be able to give us their expertise?
No, we, pretty much, they're all resident experts in their own fields. Let me start off with Ed Morrison. Ed Morrison was the fire training chief for the Overland Park Fire Department till he retired. He then was the adjunct professor at Johnson County and then left to go to the state of Kansas, where he taught advanced firefighting skills and technologies, including high-angle rescue. But now he's having the time of his life getting kids out the door, and I mean some really sharp kids. Then we have Anthony Palmasano, who is both a firefighter and a police officer and a sheriff's deputy. He's teaching in the law enforcement side. Both of those men have master's degrees. Then we have Justin Howe, who created the program at Bonner Springs and won a national award for that. He's our front-end man and does all of the stuff, teaching the kids to show an interest. Then we have two new staff members. One is an accomplished paramedic. You ought to see her setting that ambulance. It's like watching her in her office, and she is very accomplished and ready to go, and we're working on the course of study for the paramedic program as we speak. And then we have Anthony, or I'm sorry, we have Ricardo Ochoa, who is a three-term, three-tour combat veteran from Afghanistan and Iraq, who was in some of the heaviest fighting. He taught some similar classes in the Army during that period of time. He is a teacher, has been teaching for a year and a half or two, and he is a licensed, he's a licensed, I was gonna say physical therapist, but it's not, inhalation therapist. So we have a very accomplished staff, all but one have master's degrees. One has three master's degrees, but all that goes aside when you see how attentive these kids are to people who really know. And the reason we chose to go this way, and not every school district does, is my personal philosophy, not that teachers cannot, I mean, we're using traditional teachers for forensics, and during the summer, we sent them all to the forensics lab to be taught by the Johnson County Sheriff's Office. There is a place for both, but in the more technical components of it, it's my feeling that like ROTC, you can't teach ROTC without being a soldier, and not really, and we're doing both of those. And that's no knock on our teachers. We have fine teachers, but some of these areas, the finished product, are so technical and so regulated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having been a former member of the Shawnee Fire Rescue Squad and also serving on the state EMT Fire Board, I would like to say that this is, you know, I don't think people understand the amount of, as you say, technical insight, but the opportunities that are provided to these students, and whether they stay in our area or share their talents with others in the state. There is a huge need in rural areas and across the state for this talent, and I think we are preparing people at a young age to have a very successful future in an area that they choose to go into. And I know that many of our police and fire departments train a lot of officers and firemen, and they go on to other areas, and hopefully, we're providing that next level of expertise, and it's an opportunity that cannot be matched. And with that comes, as you say, the opportunity to actually use the equipment and to be a part of that process, which individuals usually don't have. So thank you very much for the program.
Well, I'm blessed. I get to watch those kids grow up in front of my face, and they are. They are growing up every single day. You should see the difference in them after a quarter. And one particular one I'm going to mention right now, because I'm so thrilled with her. She was a sophomore, and we weren't letting any sophomores into the program, but she wanted in so bad, we took a chance and we admitted her as a sophomore. She's in there competing with boys, young men who are juniors and seniors, and she cuts them no slack. She's been in the firefighting program, and she, her dad's a firefighter, her uncle's a firefighter, and she's showing them how it's done. And if you could, and I invite you, come out and see what we've got going, because I think you'll be impressed at the dedication and the commitment that these kids are showing.
And I have talked with some of your students in the program. They're dead serious about it. They are thrilled with what they're doing. They are very serious about their futures in that career, so thank you for that. I think, I'm thinking back to every little four-year-old boy wants to be a policeman or a fireman when he grows up, and you know, now you are nurturing those dreams of those kids to actually do that, because I think it was never really accessible before, but now it's offered in high school, and it's an amazing thing. And I see what you're saying about the kids growing before your very eyes there. I was impressed, very impressed.
So just a couple of things to add. Our firefighting students can come out with certifications, but our police students have to wait till they're 21. So we've been in conversation with Dr. David Cook at the Edwards Campus. He operate the training facility out in western Kansas, and trying to figure out, what do we do to bridge our graduates through their program, so they're still hooked and following the passion for their career? So we have that underway. We've also had conversation with Johnson County Community College with Joe about how do we plug our students into their programs? And they realize they'll have to step the bar up, because a lot of what the basic level that they would teach kids, our kids are going to have experienced it for two years. So really is a healthy dialogue. I think we're delivering and transforming the educational process to meet real need jobs for our students. And the last thing I want to say in front of the board very clearly, so you hear it: We are not buying a helicopter, John. We are not buying a helicopter.
If you get it donated, you better get the mechanic and the fuel, too. I was told that a lot at the city council meetings I attended, too, so I understand.
Thank you, John.
The last thing I would say is just thank you so much for your efforts in this. This was something of an idea that, you know, we thought would grow slowly, and it has just blossomed so beautifully under your leadership, so thank you.
And, Mr. President, our last presentation tonight is a legislative update from Dr. Stuart Little, district lobbyist. We've had a small decision that's come down in the last couple of weeks that we need to be looking at and concerned about, and we've got a pretty big legislative session that will start before too long. So, Dr. Little, thanks for being here tonight and sharing what you know.
Thank you, Dr. Southwood, President Denny, members of the board. I appreciate the chance to come and talk to you tonight. I apologize, this may be the end of the good news. You had a good introduction and talking. Actually, it is good news. I think the ultimate outcome of what's going to happen out of this whole process is going to be positive for the district and positive for kids. And so, but it's gonna, we're not done. I would kind of begin my comments, and you have something in writing for me, that when the legislative session ended, there was the passage of tax bill that reversed the tax policy for the last four years, a new school finance formula, a two-year budget, and everybody was excited, thought things were going to be great, until the 2nd of October, when the court finally issued its opinion on the Gannon case. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the Gannon decision and kind of the possible outcome for that, how school finance will fit into the 2018 legislative session. There are some issues that are lingering and will emerge with regard to the tax policy, and some legislative issues or some policy issues about K-12 as we get into 2018. I'll be respectful of your time. There's, I haven't been here for a while, I think since the session's been over, so... So, I will cover a few topics. And I would note, first of all, I'm not an attorney. This is not a legal opinion on the Gannon decision, but I'm going to give you a summary and more, talk about the political impact and how this will play out politically. The decision on October 2nd determined that Senate Bill 19, the school finance formula that was passed, was both unconstitutional in equity grounds and the adequacy grounds, and that there needed to be more funding or showing more funding, and that some equity issues need to be fixed. They did not, despite some minority opinions or dissenting opinions, there was no requirement that they would, the legislature would go back before the 2018 session. They set guidelines out, and that there would be oral arguments in May of next year, and by the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, there would be some decision about what would happen with the formula. So, adequacy, the court said that there was, this is the overall funding, and as you'll recall, the case was split into two categories, adequacy and equity. And the adequacy was fulfilling the constitutional requirement to fund schools and helping students accomplish or satisfy the Rose standards, and that that was not accomplished in this Senate Bill 19. There was $293 million added this year, another $100 million added on the next year. And the court didn't specifically say a dollar amount that needed to be added. They made reference to the legislative post-audit study that was done in 2005, 2006, that had significant funding increases into the base and some thoughtful consideration of how to go there, but they didn't say you have to do that. The plaintiffs had, at one point, asked for $1.7 billion to be added, and then they had a revised proposal that was $816 million, something like that, and said that would be satisfactory. The court didn't pick either one of those. They in part said, you need to show how everything you added in the formula contributes to satisfying the Rose standards, how it contributes to adequacy. And there was a sense, this has unfortunately been a repeating theme in the state's arguments on Gannon, is not showing how they accomplish things, why they did things. They need to lay that out, and I think this may be the last chance for the state to do a better job of that. On the equity side, the court, and this has to do with the fairness of the distribution of dollars, but also the issue of a district having the ability to raise similar revenues through a similar tax burden to make sure that there was equity in that capacity. There were some specific issues about equity, and there's a lot of folks that have different opinions on this, and you can read them all in the newspaper, but really, this may be the clearest guidance that the court has given to the legislature and to the governor about how they need to address these issues. We're kind of, we're at Gannon 5 now, so we've, after we're through Montoy, through Gannon, we're kind of narrowing it, and the court very specifically said, some of the things that run the bill are not constitutional, expanding the use of capital outlay, reimposing a protest petition on some people who want to increase their local option budget, calculating the local option budget on the prior year, the 10% floor on at-risk funding. Those were all very specific things that the court said, nah, that's not equitable, and they suggested remedies and that. And so, this is kind of the first home, there's some very clear guidance, where there's almost a checklist here, you need to address this, you need to address this, you need to address this. The money's out there, there's not a specific dollar amount, but it needs, there does need to be something done. They did let some things go, some of them, the CPI factor that will increase funding in the coming years, the high density at-risk by school building, which is very significant and important for us, is part of it. There's a cap on local bonding authority and state-level bonding, which we're not wild about, and we'll have another conversation about that in the future. But also prohibition against future TIF districts, the exclusion of capital outlay. So, there's a lot of issues on the table, but there's kind of a roadmap that the courts laid out, and they've given them a timeline, they haven't cut off schools and said, you need to go back and do this in a special session. So, we've got this path ahead of us here. There are a variety of responses that are being considered. One is do nothing. There is a small group of people in the legislature who believe that this is a constitutional boundaries infringement on legislative authority. That's a small, I think, small minority. There's a group that are interested in fully rewriting the school finance formula, go back over, let's start all over again, and do things differently, and recalculate it. And then there's another group that are considering and talking about going back in and make targeted fixes, go down these lists and address the things that need to get done, and that's probably the most likely option. There is the very good possibility that there would be either one of two things. The legislative committees that do those, education issues, education funding in the House, and there's a Senate Select Committee, they may be authorized to meet again this fall, so the legislature could get a head start on gathering information, putting it together. There may be a special joint committee that would come together. There has been talk among some in leadership positions about doing a new study, having somebody else go back and study again, what we might need to fund this. I think lots of folks think there's probably not time to do something very much along those lines, but there's a lot of those conversations. I would suspect, October 30th, the LCC, the legislative leadership is going to meet, and I suspect they will approve either these two committees to begin meeting before the session begins, or have a joint committee meeting to start moving into that realm. There are some issues that I want to bring up about tax policy and how we're going to, those are going to play out in 2018, because I think there are some significance. There are some challenges to resolving this. Take a breath and pause and see if anybody has any questions at this point about the decision, because now I'm going to be talking about the circumstances in which we're going to be dealing with the decision.
Questions?
Not yet.
Okay. The tax bill that was passed, and I promise I'll come back to a point here, Senate Bill 30 was passed, reversed the march toward zero four years of tax policy, that included a reduction in the income tax rates, elimination of the small business LLC, sub-S corp taxes, all those things. Those were reversed, restoration of the tax on those businesses, the restoration of three tiers of tax policy, raising, increasing the tax rate, income tax rates back up, not all the way back to where they were in 2012, but back up. And what it did was, it began the process that was passed during the legislative session, but there are some issues, as everyone and people that follow these kind of nerdy policy guys like me, you've got ag prices, interest rates, federal tax policy, there's a tremendous number of issues. They're going to have an impact on how revenue is going to come in under this new tax policy. We're up, we've got probably over a $225 million balance, ending balance in 18 right now because of revenue, and we have had revenue collections up. November, we'll get revenue estimates, and those will go up because, most likely, because the indicators are. There's one part of this that's going to be a challenge, the small business taxes. Small businesses, I'll just uniformly describe them as the small business exemption. Those people are going to start paying taxes again after four years. When that originally was passed, there were about 180 small businesses that were eligible. The income that they would be able to receive was somewhere in the neighborhood of $200, $300 million. In the last four years, the number of LLCs has doubled to about 300,000, and we may, if you've talked about doubled numbers and that, there may be a billion dollars in tax revenue that will come back into the state because of this tax policy. That's maybe a high end, but it's at least $300, $400 million, maybe $500 million that will come back in. The challenge is, when the bill was passed, it's retroactively applied to January 1 of this year, so all those folks can either make estimated quarterly payments, or they can pay lump sum on the 16th of April next year without a penalty. And everybody knows the time value of money, and I suspect the quarterly estimated payments are insignificant in some ways. But what that means, on the 16th of April, the state general fund budget for the state of Kansas is about $6.6 billion. If we're talking about, there could be somewhere approaching a half a billion to a billion dollars that we don't even know if it's coming in or not, because you'll have these entities that have not paid taxes for four years. I'm not sure how the state has a way of estimating how much revenue is. And I'm not making this up, by the way, those of you that follow along. Chris Courtwright, the economist for the legislature, this is a conversation that he's engaged in with folks. So, what that means is, you now have, I'm going to talk about chunks of time. The bulk of the legislative session is January, February, March, and then they're done at the end of March. They take a break in April, they come back at the beginning of May and do the veto session. The Supreme Court has said there will be briefs filed by the 30th of April, and then we'll do oral arguments into May. So, the legislature will have to have a revenue plan to fund a school finance response and have a school finance response done kind of at the end of March, when the regular session ends, because the state's going to have to file briefs and have oral arguments almost before the legislature comes back. But theoretically, you could have a fifth, or a fourth, or, you know, a sixth of the state's income, not even counting, you wouldn't know how much money you have. And so, the legislature is going to be faced with having to make tax policy, education policy decisions without knowing what that final deadline is. And I say that to come back again to, the way the timeframe works now, we could be going in again into May, into June, coming to these resolutions, but the courts set these deadlines of when things need to get done. So, it'll be a big challenge, because the legislature's going to have to move twice as fast as they did last year. If they're going, if nothing else changes, they're going to have to pass some kind of revenue plan to spend money and the formula fixes before the end of March. Otherwise, we're going to have some significant issues. There are, I would mention a couple of things that are going on over the summer related to K-12. There is a transportation audit going on by legislative post-audit, a career and tech ed study being done by the State Department of Education. The Department of Administration, bless them, they're spending time on studying the continued consolidation of purchasing and health insurance. It's part of the Alvarez and Marsall efficiency audit. They're still looking into that. All these things are going to be reported back to the 2018 legislature. I would note that as we get into the 2018 session, we're going to have to deal with some of these timing issues. Most legislators thought there were enough votes. You'd had a vote on taxes, probably a couple. You had a vote on Medicaid expansion, a school finance formula. You're probably going to have another vote on taxes or revenue, another vote on school finance, which, as we're getting into 2018, I would remind you, every member of the House of Representatives is up for election. There's only one senator because of a retirement. They all ran in 2016, only one senator, but every House member will be up for reelection, and I believe there are 17 or 18 people running for the governor's race. So, it's going to be hard to have a majority, a veto-proof majority this year, because lots of people that voted for taxes last year don't want to do it again, because they're going to face reelection. There's going to be less, maybe "less" isn't the right word, there's going to be a lot more, I think, division. You're not going to probably get enough votes to override vetoes. We're going to have a new governor, if Governor Brownback leaves and Lieutenant Governor Collier becomes, we're going to have a new governor. That dynamic changes what's his role in this. You're going to have to deal with the tax issues facing elections. There will be resolution, there is no way around it, there will be resolution to these issues. I just don't know how quickly it's going to come because of the revenue issues, the timing issues, the election issues. I think it's going to be, it's not going to be as complex probably as last legislative session was, when we're essentially doing a whole new formula, but it is going to be just as difficult, I suspect, before we get to the end. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Ms. Schratt. So, your summary was very helpful, and I'm going to try to do it like this in maybe one sentence, but my question, and that is, so would you look at the upcoming session in order to just address these checklists that really, the tweaks to the school finance formula addresses the equity piece, and it's all about tax policy on the adequacy piece?
Well, I don't know if it's, tax policy is part of the conversation, and there are some people who want to have another tax discussion. There are some people who don't want to have a tax discussion at all. There are some people who want to say, we've got some revenue, and we do, there's more revenue coming in. One of the things that they talked about that was in the Senate plan for a long time was utilities tax. You don't pay sales tax on your utilities right now, and you add that, that generates $200-plus million a year. There's those options in there, so I don't know that necessarily has to be another big tax package that's passed, but you may have to do some non-fun things to come up with that revenue in other places. As far as how much you need, that is, that's, I think, in the eye of the beholder and what 63 people will decide, I suspect.
My question then would be about advocacy on our behalf. We're going to sit down and do a poll, you know, walk through our legislative platform, or do we insert our interests?
Well, I would say this. A clear message from the court's opinion, this is my opinion, this is not the opinion of the board, is that there's a clear message here that the court is very confident and very strong in their continued commitment to funding, increasing funding overall, and targeting funding at, in particular, the quarter of those students, those at-risk students who are not achieving, and investing resources there, and they are not, this court is not keen on challenging, interesting, new ways to try to do local funding or flexibility and those kind of things. They have had a couple of times of examples of that, and so, this is, I think, much more a meat and potatoes, let's build up the whole thing, and when people have tried to do things, even some of the things that are pragmatically realistic, like, for example, calculating your LOB based on what you know, the prior year's, makes perfect sense to the legislature because then you're not caught by an unpredictable, oh, we had X amount of kids go up, here in the middle of the school year, we've got to come up with another, some years it was, you know, $50 million you'd have to come up because of some of those adjustments that would come up because assessed evaluations or kids coming in. And the court said, even, you can't even do that, because that district the next year wouldn't have adequate funding, and it would be discriminating, again, I don't know if discriminating is a term, but it would be disproportionately impacting them if they didn't. So, they're not really interested, they've, I think, pretty clearly demonstrated they're not interested in talking about those kind of things right now.
Thank you. Ms. Neber.
Thank you. One of the things I garnered, Dr. Little, from the court hearing when I was there, was there was not enough supporting documentation to show that certain amounts led to a certain achievement. And that was something that the state said, well, we need more time, we need three or four years to garner that, rather than looking at districts who funded at a certain level, used the same kind of, or relatively close to the same kind of standards and what that costs. So, there was no supporting documentation to prove what the state was stating, and I think that all of the judges on that panel questioned, how did you arrive that this was the correct amount when you have no supporting documentation? You can't show us the proof. There is no proof. And so, what I garnered from this breakdown was also, you're going to have to show us what we're expecting or looking for in achievement to reach these goals. And I don't think that was ever presented from the state's perspective. Would you?
No, I would agree with that. That was an underlying premise, and I would even state that, for example, the Kansas Association of School Boards and their conversation, but they have very specifically said, this is not necessarily about adding more money. There's the potential that this could be, what there is now could be adequate, if only the state would say how, for example, increasing the at-risk rate would contribute to, literally, it's almost the argument, you didn't connect the dots. You didn't build that structure around your argument. So, even they are arguing, not arguing, I think they would say there needs to be more money, but they do rely a lot on, the court didn't even say that that's necessarily what you did. You needed to show us how you connect that to, coming back to the Rose standards, how, what are you doing that gets folks to the Rose standards?
It's kind of like algebra problems, show me your work, prove your answer. And there wasn't any of that. So, if that were to come forth, or if there was information available, that may equate to lower amounts of money, but how they're used. And I don't think that was displayed from the state's perspective when they were presenting the case, and that's the way I read it when it came back, was we were missing some parts in that.
I think that's a very fair assessment.
Other questions? Well, thank you, Dr. Little.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll move to open forum. I don't have any blue, nobody? Okay. So, let's move to approval of minutes of our September 25 meeting. Ms. Zila?
I would move approval of the minutes of September 25. Second.
Second by Mrs. Mack. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Adopted 7-0. Adoption of the agenda.
Move adoption.
Thank you, Ms. Goodburn. And the second by Mrs. Bissfield. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. They're adopted. Now, we move to routine business by consent. This is an opportunity for any board member to remove any item for separate discussion. Is there any item any board member wishes to withdraw?
I would move approval of routine business by consent.
Second.
And second by Mrs. Zila. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Adopted. That gets us all the way down, all the way down. Both same sign. Adopted. That gets us all the way down, all the way down. We are at, what, R?
P1.
P1. P1. Dr. Southwick?
Yes. As the board knows, we've done a tremendous amount of HVAC work across the district over the last three or four years. Some of that is a result of our capital outlay dollars, but a lot of that coming from the bond issue. So tonight, you have a motion in front of you, a recommendation for us to move into Phase 4 of the performance contracting work. Work will be done at Shawnee Mission East, Shawnee Mission North, Shawnee Mission West, and West Ridge. Dr. Denny, you asked earlier if this Phase 4 was our last phase, and the answer to that is no. We will have a fifth phase as a part of this issue. And then as we plan for our next bond issue, you can guarantee that there will be continued phases that we'll have to address our issues around heating and cooling. So tonight, I would recommend approval of the Energy Conservation Performance Contracting Services with Train Company for a cost of $5,967,020. The services associated with Phase 4 projects address replacement refurbishment of existing HVAC equipment in the buildings that I mentioned.
Move approval.
Second.
By Mrs. Missfield. Second by Mrs. Mack. I would take this opportunity to tell those in the audience who may be somewhat younger, that you probably don't remember a time when our high schools were not air-conditioned. But there was such a time, and
Some of those high schools were.
Yeah. But, and a bond issue in about 1994 was passed to air-condition those high schools. So I can remember sitting in a math class under the bridge at West at 7:00 at night, when the temperature inside the room was 110 degrees. So it was well worth it. But stuff wears out, and so we're in the process of replacing. So it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Adopted 7-0. So we are now at, what, Q1, which is the board meeting. Dr. Southwick?
Yes. Before you, as the, asking you to approve a revised policy AC nondiscrimination, recommend that you do approve this. It will put you in standard with state and federal law. And to be honest, you really don't have an option.
So moved.
Second.
By Mrs. Mack.
By Mrs. Neber.
By Mrs. Neber.
And second by Mrs. Neber. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion adopted. So now we move to R1. Mrs. Goodburn.
R1 is the election of delegate to KASB convention, and I believe Mrs. Zila is interested in doing this. So I will motion that Mrs. Zila be our official delegate to the Assembly of the Kansas Association of School Boards. It's going to be held December 1st to the 3rd.
Second.
Okay. By Mrs. Mack. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Okay. Now, one more thing, I think, because we never know whether somebody will flat tire or get the flu, but we probably ought to have an alternate as well. And I understand, Mrs. Mack, you are also attending?
I will be attending as, on the legislative committee.
Would you consent to serve as our alternate delegate?
I'd be happy to.
Would you like to make a motion, Mrs. Goodburn?
It's not on the agenda, but can we do that?
Sure.
Okay. I'll motion that Mrs. Mack serve as the alternate.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Please.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. All right. Let's see. Now we get to reports to the board. We have our financial report, which we get every month. Does anybody have any questions? I see Russ back there. He's always ready to answer a question. Seeing none, we'll go to board comments. Mrs. Mack?
Yes. Dr. Denny, you talked, and Dr. Southwick talked earlier about the breakfast. And I just wanted to thank the Communications Department at large. First of all, the breakfast was incredible, wonderful job. Erin Little, you did a terrific job managing that and putting that all together. And, but I also wanted to say, at large, the Communications Department. There are new efforts. Shawna Samuels has been doing direct from the district. Other efforts have been made for better communication, proactive. We're getting lots of results and data back. It's, it's been wonderful. So I wanted to compliment the department.
Okay. Other comments?
I want to thank everyone for their input on the profile that we're developing for the search for a new superintendent. We've had excellent participation, both in-person and online. We will have a meeting a week from today, where we will hear a report from the consulting firm that will tell us what the community has provided us as a form of priorities as we embark on our search. I also want to use this enough to say, but that's not where your input ends, meaning this is the input into the profile. Continue to engage us, continue to give us your input, your thoughts, questions as we go through this. This is not just because the survey ends on this date, that therefore we disappear. I want to make sure that we're continuing to invite input as we move through this process. Secondly, we just elected some folks to, to represent us at KASB. Also, I want to make it clear that many of us attend that, so it's not just one or two attend. But we all have opportunities to attend that, and we're also looking at finding ways to engage any new elected board members to participate in those too, because there's some really great training that takes place through our membership of KASB, that we can get the new board members up and running. So I just wanted to share that too, that we leverage that as a resource too.
Any other questions? Mrs. Zila?
One more comment here. Today, we accomplished the last visit to all of our 33 elementary schools that have been board visits the last couple of months, which have been absolutely wonderful, to be in the building, seeing the kids learning and engaging. And we saw some great examples just today of a teacher that so engaged her kids, and rewarded them, and treated them so beautifully, and rewarded them for some things that they were doing. And a lot of it is that Engage New York new math system, which is formidable for the teachers to do that, and to be well-versed in that with the kids. It's a whole different way of thinking about math. So you parents that have kids in school right now, I can kind of relate to what you're going through. It's a, it's a new and different process, but the kids are doing a beautiful job of that. So it was very fun to be in the schools. Secondary schools are to come.
I was just going to say that we will not leave secondary out, and they will get to see some of us coming through during November.
Anything else?
That's it.
Saying none, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Bye.
Well, wait a minute. No, I guess, we're not, well, yeah. Mr. Stratton.
Mr. President, I move that we go into executive session to discuss potential litigation for our, with our legal counsel pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship under KOMA. The meeting will resume in the boardroom at, half hour should be?
30 minutes?
Yeah, 8:45.
Second.
There will be no business conducted after the executive session.
Okay. So moved by Mr. Stratton, and seconded by Mrs. Mack. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. All right. You can make better notes.